Wonderful. Well, welcome to the October 25th, 2022, meeting of the McMinnville City Council. We're going to have a work session followed by the regular meeting. So I'll go ahead and call the work session to order at 6:01 PM. And I would like to start us by calling on our communication and engagement manager, Noelle Amaya. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is my first time presenting officially in front of city council, and I'm really excited to be here. I have a 30-minute presentation for you tonight, which should leave plenty of time for you and A. At the end, so if you wouldn't mind kind of jotting down your questions, I'd be happy to attend to answer them. Let's get into it. Communication, oh, first one. Communication and engagement. I've been with the city for a little three years now, working at various capacities, and I felt like we were at a prime place to have the conversations around the work that's been done and chat about where we're going. I put this quote up here. I love this quote. At every work session I've seen put on by city staff, especially those during the budget sessions, they had some sort of quote or sentiment that was attached, and I really felt like this one speaks to me and how I've approached our communications programming in terms of really understanding the life cycle of communication. If you ever took a college course on this topic, one of the most basic principles I remember learning was that our messages are only as good as the person who is receiving it and has the ability to understand that message. And even further, to be able to take action afterward. I once took a training where the instructors asked us to think about structuring our messages towards our audiences head, heart, and hands. So in our case, head, what do we want the public and our community to think about? Heart, how do we want them to feel? And hands, what do we want them to do? Just in case you're wondering who George Bernard Shaw is, he had a role in revolutionizing comedic drama, which is really who I am as a person, so I thought that was really appropriate as well, and was famous for writing the play My Fair Lady, which was one of my favorite childhood movies. Okay. So here's the path we've been on. I'll just kind of start at the beginning. The first part of our communications and engagement story begins with me. The city found the resources and saw the need for hiring someone to serve these functions as their main focal point. That was a really big step for the city. As far as I understood, there's never been a communications or engagement professional working for the city before, so the investment into that function was a big step. There were several times during the first year or so that I was here that people would say, "Oh, I didn't know that the city had a communications person." And they were really pleased to hear that. The news register even ended up doing a little write-up on my role early in 2021. My role officially moved into administration in September of 2021, partly due to the classification and compensation work, but also, and what I would like to believe, because the work that I had been doing for the city was starting to see its value. The city rebrand was also a big step for the city and was supported through our partnership with Visit McMinnville, that 12-month process. And if you remember from those presentations that were primarily given by Kylie, that really helped the city make moves in increasing its recognition and credibility with the community. Some of the biggest benefits of having a solid brand is that a brand itself is an actual visual representation that helps us instill trust through a consistent look and feel. It helped us align with our partner organizations, and it helps us show the community that we really have our stuff together, which can help attract talent to the city as well. I got to say, working through that change management during the branding process for city staff was pretty difficult. It was a long series of baby steps. And the organization and training sessions that we did along that way helped each department feel like they were brought along in the process and helped tell the story behind what we're doing and why we're doing it. One of the first things I did after my role officially moved into administration was to work through MacTown 2032 with a fine-tooth comb, really searching all of the goals for all the goals or objectives that were tied specifically to communication or engagement. That was included in your packet today. I was able to identify specific strategic goals, and then I worked through identifying what milestones or activities needed to happen to connect the dots between the act themselves and the larger overarching goal. The second part of what I worked on during that phase was identifying who the city's audiences are, what our message is to those audiences, as well as the channels that we have available to us, the frequency we have in those channels and the partners we have in that messaging. This really helped me in many ways define and bring structure to this program and helped me define what kinds of actions that I needed to personally prioritize. From there, I was able to create, and I'm still working on refining this in many ways, a consistent approach to our employee newsletter and our internal comm strategies, getting to know each department and their own unique way of wanting to communicate or be communicated with has been really interesting and has actually taken quite a bit of face time to kind of earn that trust and that relationship within those groups. Most people at the city and different departments know me at this point now, because I often show up and I kind of make fun of myself. Hey, it's me. I'm here again to bother you and take your pictures. And, you know, people have been a lot more accustomed to seeing that and participating. Employees have kind of built some trust for me in the most part, and they know that I really like this aspect of our role and that I really like to tell our story. In terms of our internal comms, it's something that Kylie and I were working closely on when she was here or had the intent to work on, rather. And then with her leaving and then the vacancy being there for quite some time, the internal aspect of communications hasn't really had the chance to take off and take shape. Vicky and I have had a very brief conversation about communication, and once she gets to a place where I know that she's ready, I know that she prioritizes this work as well. And then, but last but not least, the city email blast that goes out every Tuesday is one major addition that's actually been quite successful. The city hovers right around a 39% open rate for that city email, and the national average is right around 21%, and those stats are pulled directly from all MailChimp users nationally. Working through the implementation of the branding means that every department has had the opportunity to kind of button up their social media presence. I've worked with many groups internally to advise on their practices, their photo voice techniques. And then Griffin is actually quite stark if you compare to what social media looked like, you know, prior 2019 to what it looks like now, much more consistent feel throughout our platforms. I won't bore anybody with social media statistics, but I would like to share the demographic of our users across all of our channels. And when I say all of our channels, what I really mean is Parks and Recreation and the library pages, and then the general city account. We have a user base of 75% women aged 25 to 45, which is really quite pretty interesting to think about. So a couple of things, just what you can expect from my role. I know I've had the opportunity to chat with individuals in this team or on council, just individually, but not quite as a group. I provide training on messaging best practice and help lead website audits. I work directly with consultants or project managers when we go out for RFP to ensure that our public engagement plans are consistent and are in line with our organizational goals. A good example of this is how I'm working as part of the project team on the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. I worked directly with Susan to develop that language that went into her RFP, and that was part of the scoring team who ultimately chose the consultant. I work closely with Susan and her consultant throughout the life of her project as a partner in developing and executing our public engagement activities. Part of my role is to stay up to date on current trends, which are always changing. Are we being thoughtful, equitable, interesting? Can we make city news and information fun? Interacting with our community partners, especially those who have communication or engagement functions as part of a network that I'm working on building and trying to get familiar with. I'm only one person, so the struggle is real in terms of finding time to meet all of, to meet all the faces, bump the elbows, shake the hands, go to the meetings. And this is something I know that's actually really important to my role. It's a goal of mine to have more of a presence at community events. Some of you might remember seeing me at the BIPOC block party last year that was held at Mac Market, handing out city swag and trying to get people to sign up for my city email. I was also painting faces there, which was pretty, so I ended up being most popular with the kids. A side note to that, some of you already know that I am a business owner and I have six children. So after hours activities and weekend things are really challenging for me to attend, but this is a priority of mine, and it's something that I would like to be able to do more of. Kind of the no-brainer part of my role is to really focus on the collective messaging that we want to send as a city. What are we working on? And what is the big picture of how all of those projects will align? It's my job to know who is communicating, how they're communicating, and when they're communicating. Some projects to be aware of. I'm going to start with the big one in the middle, Citizen Lab. Citizen Lab is one that you've probably heard the most chatter about, or maybe not. I know that I've heard Mayor Drapkin refer to this a few times during council meetings. Citizen Lab is a community engagement software that's designed to do exactly what it sounds like, engage with the community. Many cities around us, including Tigard, Wilsonville, and Hillsborough, to just name a few, are using very similar software that allows us to really set up an interactive platform for messaging and sharing information. The platform's capability ranges from being able to automatically translate the information that we've got on there in both Spanish and Russian, and allows the user to self-select their preferences, as well as allows us to send text messages, considering neighborhood-specific messaging when we get to that point, to send surveys, to collect their responses, to give our community members a budget and ask them, "How would you like to, if you had $100 to allocate, how would you split it up between these priorities?" Our program, which I've named iHeartMac.org, is ready to go live by the end of this month. I'm shooting for a November 1st date, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to get there. This is an ARPA-funded project that I've been super excited about and looking forward to the opportunity to launch an awareness campaign that will stretch well into the new year with the possibility of being able to collect data on our user base by Q3 of 2023. When users are invited to this platform, they'll be required to answer a few simple demographic questions. We only chose four to be specific, because that was what we were advised is kind of the sweet spot in terms of, don't ask too many questions, because then people will be like, "Ah, I don't want to sign up for that." It feels a little less intrusive. We did decide to include which ward they live in, which will be interesting to see what part of our city is the most interactive on our platforms, and more importantly, who is not interacting on our platforms. ARPA, you heard from our grant administrator, Mandy Sharp, several weeks ago about how data for ARPA projects is going to be collected, tracked, and administered. So I'm working closely with Mandy on her materials, and this is a large chunk of what we're working on right now, uploading into Citizen Lab. Many of these projects won't necessarily require engagement in terms of asking the public for feedback necessarily. We wouldn't be asking the public, you know, which type of vehicle to buy or anything like that. So we're just simply sharing the timeline, it's information sharing, and the reasons behind why we made the purchase, why it was approved, and what budget we're allocating towards that resource. The city services charge. Hopefully, many of you have had the opportunity to look over the information that's been put on our city website concerning the city services charge. For now, the website includes basic FAQs and some light background information as to how we got here and what our goals are as a city. I'm working closely with McMinnville Water and Light staff to create a bill stuffer that will go into customer bills come the November, December bill cycle. And Jeff and I recently discussed the option of sending a citywide mailer or postcard in addition to that bill stuffer as a way to just double down on that messaging and make sure that it reaches everybody that we intend to reach. Our website refresh. I've been working closely with our IS department and a small team, including folks from the library and Parks and Recreation, on a website refresh. That includes a whole wash of the colors, the addition of our logos, and menu options, and a new layout. I hope to have this buttoned up by the first couple of weeks of November, but this will depend on how quickly and accurately we can test the dummy site when it's returned to us. I can't wait for you to see this. In comparison to how it looks right now, what I've seen up to date, it's logical, it's visually appealing, it's geared towards our customer, which is what's most important. And last but certainly not least is the Public Engagement Charter and Equity Lens work that we've been doing. This was a really big lift and something that I have honestly been working on for probably intermittently over the past 18 months. This was the other document that was included in your packet tonight. When I initially created this document, it was just the charter piece that spoke mostly to our process and our commitment and our resources as a city and how we determined to approach public engagement. What it evolved into with the help of the DEI committee is what you have before you today, that draft. The idea is that the city would be able to adopt this tool as a staff or even for city council to use when deciding on reviewing our resources or the budgets and how they're going to be distributed, for example. The lens and subsequent charter requires that our project managers, our consultants, our staff, or other stakeholders are held accountable to answering the hard questions. Why are you doing this project? Who have you considered in making your decisions? Who does this project impact, and how might it worsen the circumstances or widen the opportunity gap for others? As I put on the slide there, the intent is to build community and not bureaucracy, meaning that this tool and policy document is to be public-facing and act as both an internal guideline for the values that we stand behind as a city, as well as an external commitment to our customers and what we promise to consider when we make decisions that ultimately affect their lived experience. Although it kind of seems when you're looking through it that it's a little bit of a checklist or answering questions in some sense, it's more of a way to inspire thoughtful conversations, decisions, and the actions, and to illustrate to the public and to ourselves that we've done so. Between the DEIC and myself, we put a lot of thought and hours behind how we'd like to see the city utilize this tool, and we feel really proud of the steps that the city has even taken up until this point to reflect on DEI and taking a deeper look into our system and our approach to engagement. So right now, you've got the draft, and the next steps for this work is to review this document with the executive team, and then when Citizen Lab goes live and we're ready to officially launch our awareness campaign, we will put it out to the public to weigh in on our approach and the ideologies that we put forth. The intent is to post the draft for 30 days, then incorporate suggestions or feedback that we receive from the public, as well as feedback from you and feedback from the executive team, and then bring a final draft to officially adopt sometime probably around the new year. So this is my SORC analysis. What is a SORC analysis? Yes, I totally made this up. I made it up to fit the needs of what I wanted to talk about tonight, so we'll start with our strengths. The city's biggest strength from my perspective is that we're really making an effort to make space, starting somewhat with the hiring of my role. Each department has ended up creating their own internal group who's focused on aligning our messaging. And to my understanding, over the past two years or so, this is the first time that's really happened. While I'm not directly involved in each department's day-to-day activities with communications per se, I do liaise with and have been noodling over ideas in how we can kind of create an internal committee of some kind that's focused on getting us all on the same page, adequately using our resources or combining resources and sharing the same messaging. We've done a really great job at building a following. Since my time with the city and creating the general city of McMinnville account, we've grown our follower base by over 300%, which is pretty remarkable. We continue to grow, and we see interest in what's happening on those pages. I've heard a lot of positive feedback personally from folks who are happy to see that the city is really trying to get the word out about our projects and our services and that we're taking steps in the right direction. A focus on versatile programming. The pivots we made during COVID were a huge step in the right direction. We made a lot of upgrades, and many of our staff members have, you know, had hand-in-hand in making that successful, including Scott's whole team from IS and Claudia's undying commitment to making sure that our public meetings go without issues, that our materials are posted online, that recordings are available within 24 hours, if not sooner. We've come a long way here in the last couple of years, and we should be really proud of that work. So what are some opportunities for us? We have an opportunity to really rethink the way that we, as a city, remove barriers to our participation. I'm hopeful that Citizen Lab will help us address many of these issues in its ability to send updates via text message. But I'd also love to see us, you know, investing in possibly a reader board or having one outside of Civic Hall, holding public meetings in community spaces and utilizing some of our partnerships to help us plan for those neighborhood meetings. We also have the opportunity, as we look at creating revenue, that we prioritize funding solutions for this work and how we allocate resources towards these types of programs. I know many of our departments or respective areas could use their own consistent and dedicated funding source for communications. In some ways, this could help us remove barriers. This could be used towards staff hours who would provide childcare activities so that parents can participate in public meetings. Maybe we're providing snacks, travel vouchers, or even compensation when appropriate, when volunteers dedicate their time to participating in community surveys or interviews. Many of the cities around us provide similar perks for their community members, and we have an opportunity to follow some of those best practices. So here's just kind of an overview of some of the resources we have in our toolbox. Our partnerships and committees are a great tool for spreading the word about city projects. A great example of this was how we provided a speaker training at the kickoff of the Fire District messaging. We invited community stakeholders to join in and to help us all get on the same page with sharing the same message. Our relationships are definitely one of our biggest assets. Of course, the webpage in Citizen Lab, these are both great online tools that allow our community members to self-select information at their own interest levels. I won't go into that too much, because we already kind of touched on those things. Traditional media and mail has made a comeback. In engagement circles, there's a lot of discussion about how there has been data that's showing a shift back to the success of using snail mail versus email. Millennials and younger generations have become accustomed to being inundated by our emails and marketing emails and marketing messages and all those kinds of things. And we've started to ignore them in some sense. Or we seldom take the time to read them thoroughly, which is why it's pretty remarkable that we have a 40% open rate for our email. It's like, hey, that's a great strength that we have. The data is showing that there's a shift back to actually taking more time to look at what is delivered to our home, what we can actually hold in our hands instead, and actually take a minute to even just front and back looking at something while we're walking from the mailbox back to our front door, right? We received a lot of positive feedback from both the Fire Districting mailer that we had sent and the Three Mile Lane Area Plan mailer. Although I am aware and embarrassed by how small that mailer was, it was a lot smaller in person than I had anticipated it to be, and I won't make that mistake again. Social networking is obviously a resource that we've been working on and expanding our reach over the past couple of years. I put some simple stats up there on the page for you to look at, and these almost mirror what Parks and Rec are seeing and the library sees as well. YouTube has the largest user base out of all social media tools that are out there, and I've incorporated some goals in my ARPA project for city communications and translation that should help us utilize the ways that we can use YouTube as a city, although I haven't quite made it there yet. Our community spaces are a huge resource to us, and even though we don't have a lot of meeting spaces that are necessarily comparable to Civic Hall, we have parks and other community gathering spaces that we could be using or that are resources to us. Our Summer Fund program and how they utilized our community spaces, that has been super successful and a really great model. Overall, it's a great marketing tool for us to use if we have the ability to do so. Like I mentioned previously, we have an opportunity to harness the resources and partnerships to create neighborhood meetings and spaces where we can make the messaging feel personal to those groups or those spaces. And this is my last slide for you today, so I won't drone on forever. Challenges. Low engagement from the Spanish-speaking community. It's been a challenge to create a safe space for our Spanish speakers in McMinnville and to make sure that their voice is being heard. We aren't seeing many members attend public meetings, and what we've heard from some members is that the focus on McMinnville downtown and Third Street isn't inviting and isn't for them. Pricing isn't approachable. We don't really have shops or stores that are geared towards our Spanish-speaking community, and therefore, the fact that all of our meetings are also held down here probably doesn't help that situation. On the flip side of that, kind of referring back to the fact that the Summer Fund program was really successful and engaging with that community, seeing success during some of the Free Neighborhood program that we put on during the Summer Fund program, I think there's a lot to be learned from that model in terms of how we can plan for equitable involvement or our public meetings in the future. So some ideas on equity versus justice. I recently participated in a small community audit as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that included interviews from 10 different community stakeholders and how they view the city's culture surrounding DEI. The interviews themselves were conducted by the engagement consultant who was drafting the Public Engagement Charter for that portion of the project, and they were chosen specifically to help the city craft an approach that was specific to what our community feels and what their feelings are about how we've incorporated DEI into what we do. It was really interesting, because the consultant actually found that through, found through those interviews at the city, on the learning spectrum of DEI is not really ready to discuss any topics related to racial justice, because we've barely tapped into social equity here in McMinnville. And that information she learned really helps us kind of provide a guideline for city staff to learn from her approach to DEI and how she is kind of thinking about how we should craft some of our future endeavors related to DEI for McMinnville. What's the difference between social equity and racial justice? I just pulled a quick definition from the web for you. Social equity looks for the solutions to address an imbalanced social system, whereas justice takes equity one step further by fixing the systems in a way that lead to long-term, sustainable, and equitable access. The sense of safety, sense of place. Also, part of the information we learned from those interviews, from the in-depth interviews, the IDIs, was that our external forces, there are external forces throughout Yamhill County that actually influence the way that our community members are feeling. It affects their sense of safety and their place here in McMinnville. Greater Yamhill County seems to be slower than McMinnville proper in accepting and embracing ideologies that are different or outside of those founded traditional white culture. What do I mean by that? Events like what we've seen in the Newburgh School District negatively affects our BIPOC community members here in McMinnville and throughout the entire county, and we see that affecting all of our community members here. Our technical resources. Finding space to leverage the technology that we do have versus what is out there is a challenge. Even tools like the type of GIS software we have may impact many of the things that we do in conjunction with other departments in terms of how we isolate or understand who's living in McMinnville, their address, boundaries, or anytime that we're creating maps for the public or on our website. Heather did not ask me to plug that, by the way. Citizen Lab and similar tools fall within this category, but we currently have funding through the ARPA dollars for three years, and it'll be up to the city after that point to create the space for the tools that help us tell our story. Okay, and I'll finish my presentation talking about staff resources. You didn't really think you'd be able to get through a whole presentation from a member of the executive team without hearing about staff resources, right? Communications and engagement are typically two separate full-time roles, and in many instances, they are small teams. This role combined as a function is complementary, sure, but it is a challenge to manage. I often feel as if I'm, you know, trying to grab balloons before they floated away. This also extends into each department and how they have had to address their communication needs. They've actually been able to find ways to utilize their staff to perform some of these functions and set up systems that are really successful in both Parks and Rec and library. It's really great what they've done. Even though this is only a small portion of what their duties are within their respective departments, it ends up being kind of an other duties as assigned type responsibility. However, due to my incredible resourcefulness, I was able to use a small portion of our ARPA funds to support a temporary contracted employee who will, at minimum, help support my campaign efforts in regards to ARPA and Citizen Lab over the next six months or longer, if I can stretch it. The bottom line is that the staffing model we currently have for this program is not sustainable long-term, and I just want you to be aware of that. And that concludes my presentation, so you can...
Thank you very much. Wonderful presentation. We will go to every member of the council for an opportunity to ask questions or comment. I'm going to go ahead and start with councillors who are on Zoom this evening. And I see that we have councillor Sal Peralta on Zoom. Sal, do you have, councillor, pardon me, councillor, do you have any questions or... Sal, do you have, councillor, pardon me, councillor, do you have any questions or comments this evening?
I was fumbling with my controls. No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Payne.
That was a very detailed presentation. Thank you, Noel. Thank you for growing our follower base. Do you have any specific input about how we can support the growth and probably some demand for reaching the entire community beyond whatever, you know, on a DEI level?
Can you rephrase that question?
Yeah, sorry. Kind of fumbled around there.
No, that's okay.
How can the council best support you and your new contract employee, or I should say contractor, in expanding the follower base, the use of YouTube, it sounds like would be helpful, and the website for the broader community?
Yeah, so we're biting off little chunks at a time. My contracted employee, her name is Hannah, she's only started about a week ago. So her and I are still working through some of the really preliminary pieces of just getting, she's helping me build the rest of the content that's on Citizen Lab right now. So we haven't quite gotten into the planning aspect, so I'm not quite sure I can answer what types of resources I would need. I would say that I am the project manager for this city communications and translation project, as well as the city's DEI implementation and training project, which we haven't even been into yet. We're still trying to think about and have even considered possibly using the consultant that we've used for the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan to come in and kind of do a full audit and help us kind of decide what do we need to do, where do we need to start? And that should be able to help me answer some of those questions, but that's probably a good 30 to 60 days out.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, as an extension of Councillor Payne's question, I'm going to say that one ask that I, or highlight that I heard you make was that the ARPA dollars that we're using for this are going to fund this software, the Citizen Lab software, for the next three years. So my follow-up to Councillor Payne's question would be, what are the matrices that we're using to determine whether or not Citizen Lab is an effective tool for the city so that the council will be prepared to either make a funding or not make a funding decision after that three-year mark?
Sure. Well, we're going to, we'll be able to start pulling user data, probably, you know, we'll have enough at least to at least look at the first kind of six months, start of campaign but prior, but I was thinking of looking at it every six months at kind of benchmarks. The way that we've grown city social media, even in these terms, it's a slow growth model, but it's working. What we're doing, getting the word out regularly, having multiple channels for people to access, is working, even though it's slow. So I guess in terms of being able to, what we will be able to do right off the bat is import all the data we have right now, import it directly into the tool once we're able to go live and invite users. And we'll have some, a pretty good estimate, I think, immediately on where do we need to target and focus most of our messaging from this point. So I guess that kind of answers your question, but not fully.
What I'm hearing you say is that the software itself will be providing some data back for...
It actually has a pretty robust ability to pull reports on demographics and how the community is using the platform, all kinds of things. But I haven't even really gotten into the meat and potatoes of it yet because we can't do that until we have, we have users in the platform. So that's why I was saying, I kind of, I hope to be able to share something by July of next year. I think we should have at least some idea of what this looks like for us and what it's going to look like for us.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councillor Menke.
Well, that was a lively presentation, and I certainly appreciated it. A couple of things. You talked about this Citizens Lab, and you said that you were going to be asking three or four questions. What are the questions? One was by ward. What ward were you in?
Right, so we have, so we have age, gender, what ward you live in, and just, I think, oh, and your phone number. And the phone number is used for the ability for us to be able to send text messages.
Okay, so will this be part of the filter for the demographics?
Yes.
Okay. And then you talked about social media, and you said 72 to 82% are women that are accessing this?
Right.
And they're in the 25 to 45 age range. Do you have any information on men, or is it just substantially less significant?
Right, it's, yeah, just that we don't, I don't think, because those are pulled directly from Instagram, and I'm not sure that they pull a, I don't think that they pull other selections for genders other than female and male.
Okay.
So just the...
So the male or whatever makes up the difference between the 72 and 82, out of 100?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I haven't looked at the city service charge stuff, so I will have to definitely check that out. Thank you for, so much for doing that. And the website refresh, that sounds really good. At any rate, I enjoyed your presentation. Thank you so much for all you're doing. I certainly hope that we can continue to fund this after three years.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Chenoweth.
Good evening. I apologize for being late. Was stuck on a phone conversation trying to track down a lost piece of luggage.
Welcome home.
Yeah, thank you. So thank you for all your work. I appreciate the drive to try to get more interaction with our residents. I think that, I've said it when running for office, and since I've been here, I think that's very important for us. We need to get more involvement. On the question regarding wards, is that going to come with a map?
Yes, so part of the tool allows us to embed a link that somebody can search their address and see where, which ward they live in.
Perfect, because I know my experience is the vast majority of people don't even know we have wards, much less which one they're in.
Right.
So the second question I have is the 10 people that were interviewed, how were they chosen? Do you know?
I do know. So lots of different ways. I think the, her name is Charis. She gave us a criteria for, we need someone who might be able to speak to these things, someone who might be able to speak to these things. And then we sent that out through our DEIAC committee, which, two members of our DEIAC committee were part of those interviews, as well as I know Parks and Rec took from their user base families, and I know just other partners or organizations, they recommended different people who might be... So I know we had someone from the school district as well who works with migrant families.
So it wasn't very random?
Well, no, I guess not necessarily, but it, Charis did have a selection of people to choose from.
Okay. That's a concern I have. The general way in which we gather information tends to result in a, if we're not careful, in a confirmation bias coming through of what we wanted, because we didn't go through a randomized process, what we wanted for answers ended up being part of the process of picking the people we chose.
Sure.
And that doesn't really help us in making a really good, clear, drawing a really good, clear picture of where our community really stands. And so that's concerning to me, and I just want to express that, and I was concerned that might have been the case, and that's why I asked the question. The other thing, I just, just as a comment, you know, when I was elected, one of the things that I realized fairly quickly is I'm not here representing a specific subset of our population. I'm here representing the entire population. That includes BIPOC, that includes white, that includes all the different, whatever categories we want to divide people up into. And I'm concerned by some of the language that you used in your presentation that we may not be doing that. Specifically, when you made reference to what happened in Newburgh, your reference was it only affected the BIPOC community. And I can tell you that it affected pretty much everybody in Newburgh in some way or another. The division that that created, for whatever reason, whoever's to blame, I'm not going to get into pointing fingers, I don't think that's relevant, has hurt the community for everybody. And if we only focus on one subset that's being hurt by what's happening, we're ignoring all the rest of what's going on. So I would just challenge that in your analysis, that you look at that from a wider perspective.
Sure, yeah, and just to clarify, and maybe that didn't quite come across, or maybe I fumbled my words a little bit, I don't think that, I don't recall saying that exactly. I know I did call out BIPOC community specifically, but also I did say that it does affect all community members.
Yes, you actually did.
I completely agree with you in that, and I know that it affects everybody.
It's affected, I mean, it affected me, and I'm not in the community.
Right.
I hate to see us taring at each other. I hate to see us compartmentalizing everybody into categories and then trying somehow to build unity and community when we started by dividing us into subsets. It's not going to work. Balkanizing us based on whatever differentiations we want to make just creates more division. It doesn't actually build unity. So I just want to be really careful in how we go about doing that. And I will say, touching on some recent history for me, this really got brought to my attention in a way that was very unique while I was in Israel. My bus driver for my tour was a Muslim. My guide was a practicing Jew for four of the five days, and on the fifth day, it was an Eastern Orthodox Christian. It was really fascinating to see the interaction among folks that there's a lot of tension potentially in, but they just sat aside and had friendship. They ignored the differences and focused on the commonalities, and I think that's very, very important. Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you. The Public Engagement Charter and Equity Lens piece specifically, how has that been in your discussions with staff and department heads in including that in their methodology and rollout of projects?
Do you mean have they had an opportunity to comment or to provide feedback on it?
Less, somewhat that, and more of just going forward, using it as a tool, how's the reception, how's the reception coming along? I know this is sort of another document or keyhole that we're going to ask everything to pass through, and so more work is more work, but how do you feel it's, that has been received?
I haven't had too much of a challenge with some of, and this work started, like I had mentioned, you know, months and months before, before actually coming up with this official draft. Some of the work, as we were kicking off a series of master plans that will be, that we were rolling out, I had a very, not a similar presentation necessarily, but a similar conversation with everybody who was going to be a project manager for those master plans. And we talked about actually collectively having an engagement consultant to do some of this work to help with reviewing what we're doing and making sure that the, that how we choose the consultants who will be doing the work, that's a big job, and we want to make sure that we're doing it well. So, you know, initial exposure to having this keyhole, to use your terminology, has overwhelmingly been well-received. I think it's something that all of our executive team and our department heads and project managers who are working on these large projects understand that it's a very important component of the work that they're doing, because ultimately, our goal is to serve the public, right? And so, you know, I was encouraged, I should say, to continue the work that I'm doing and putting for this effort towards creating more of a structure.
That makes sense. Thank you. Yeah, I guess, you know, having the unfair advantage of being able to sit through some of this stuff, work through some of this stuff more, I'll just add that appreciate all the time and effort putting into the presentation and the work itself. I know it's well-received from the staff I've discussed and interacted with, and appreciate the perspectives and the things that you bring to the process specifically to highlight things that don't often get included in this methodology, as government can tend to just be a juggernaut that rushes through the bulwark. And so thank you for bringing along those other things that historically get forgotten.
Thank you.
Council President Garvin.
Thank you for the great presentation. Only question I have that hasn't already been addressed by others on the dais and on Zoom tonight is, you mentioned the subscribers, is that 1,600 right now for the newsletter? And I was wondering how many of those are community members out in the community versus what our city staff, like, email addresses are, so how much actual, like, out-facing community outreach we're doing?
Sure. So the, so city staff would be all of the city's email addresses that we have on file, so it's a little under 200 probably, I think, is what was initially put in there. So all of the other addresses have come from the community.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as far as somebody signing up for that, that's just clicking a link on the city website, or...
Yes, or we've actually had, so, let's see, Sam Geary, actually, she's often sends me, and I'm not sure exactly what her method is, honestly, other than maybe just voicing it, would you like to sign up for the newsletter? And she often sends me emails to be added. I often get emails that just come in from the website to, I don't know why you're laughing, but I'm laughing too now.
...interacting with people at the library.
I haven't looked to see if maybe this is already in there, but is there a way to put that subscribe to this newsletter link in the bottom of that newsletter each week? So if somebody forwards that email to a friend, they can just have something right there as they read that?
I think at the bottom of the link, there's a subscribe and an unsubscribe option, which I don't often get a subscribe from that link. I do get an unsubscribe sometimes from there, but not often.
But overall, enjoying the newsletters and look forward to seeing them keep coming out.
Thank you.
It is on our front page, on one of the green boxes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I will say that the, I feel confident saying that we're very happy to have a communications and engagement management team that you're starting to build at the city of McMinnville. I do think that we are unanimous in wanting to encourage public engagement and communication from the council out to the community and from the community back to the council, and so the work you're doing is exceptionally important. Thank you for the great amount of information. I very much am looking forward to Citizen Lab going live on November 1st, and thank you for digging as well into the equity work and addressing some of the systemic issues that we know are present. That's important work for that robust community engagement, so thank you for that work. Unless anybody has any additional questions for Noel at this time, we will end the work session, take a 10-minute break, and then start the council meeting at 7 o'clock. Okay, the work session is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Good evening, and welcome to the October 25th, 2022, meeting of the McMinnville City Council. We will start this evening with a roll call, and I will ask our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, to do so.
Councillor Geary.
Good evening.
Councillor Menke.
In the kitchen.
Councillor Chenoweth.
Present.
Councillor Payne.
Here.
Councillor Peralta.
Present.
Councillor President Garvin.
Here.
And interim mayor Drapkin.
Present. Meeting Accessibility Services and Americans with Disabilities Act notice the Kent Taylor Civic Civic Call is accessible to persons with disabilities, or request for an interpreter for the hearing impaired or for other accommodations for persons with disabilities should be made at least 48 hours before the meeting to the city recorder at 503-435-5702, or claudia.sisneros@mcminnvilleoregon.gov. And I would now like to call on Counselors at Gary to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty, liberty.
Thank you, counselor. I'd like to hear you sing the birthday song.
The slow version or the?
The full ver, the, the full, the full version. We are going to continue with a proclamation this evening. Tonight, we're starting the Extra Mile Day proclamation. We'll be inviting all citizens this evening to go the extra mile for their community. And next year, when we do this proclamation, we'll be also following up with recognition for members of the community that do so. Whereas McMinnville, Oregon is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas McMinnville, Oregon is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas McMinnville, Oregon is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas McMinnville, Oregon acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2022. Now, therefore, I, Remy Drabkin, interim mayor of the city of McMinnville, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2022, as Extra Mile Day. And I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this 25th day of October, 2022. And in a continuation of that, you may have seen this, if you're one of the 1,300 people that are receiving our city newsletter, which we just learned about in work session, the mayor's awards for this upcoming year, we're changing the, the process for those awards. Historically, they've been individually chosen by the person that holds the seat. This year, we'll be sending out nomination cards to a, a long list of community partners and organizations to nominate individuals to receive these different awards. We have four categories of awards, and this year, we'll also be introducing a youth award for, for those who are, are leaders within their, within their organizations or, or communities. So we're looking forward to that. It won't be for a while, but it's a, it's a, it's a good extension of this proclamation. Any interest? We'll now be taking comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand function in Zoom to request to speak, and once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may send a chat directly to our city recorder Claudia Sisneros, and we will announce you. Is there anybody signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes, first, we have Margaret Cross.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Margaret Cross, 1102 Southwest Russell Lane, McMinnville. My comments tonight are restricted to Section 1 of the Communications and Engagement Draft that you were just reviewing. My initial observation was that this uses a very limited definition of communication that, to my mind, restricts the, the meaning to the transmission of information. This definition focuses on one-way communication, and in this context, the strategies that are outlined make sense, since their focus is primarily on identifying audiences, consistency of messaging, branding, management of the message, ensuring the message is on target, and increasing online and social media use. However, a broader definition of communication includes two-way interchange of thoughts, opinions, or information. And if this definition is used, the document, in my mind, falls short. Using the broader definition would change both the purpose and the focus of the policy and expand the goals. At least two important goals should be added. One, accessibility to information by the citizens. And two, improved mechanisms for the open exchange of information and ideas. In addition to clearly defining what you mean by communication, I suggest the following inclusion, inclusions to the proposed strategies. Require written minutes that report the activities and decisions of the county, city council, commissions, and boards in a timely manner and make them available online and at the city offices. Include clear written policies about record-keeping, meeting protocols, and practices like non-disclosure agreements and development agreements that may inhibit access to information by the public. Provide pagination and a summary index when documents exceed 50 pages. Provide public summaries of proposed projects before surveys or policy decisions are blasted out, to use the terminology. And hire and retain, try to hire and retain local technical staff, such as a full-time city engineer. Consultants have no obligation to talk to citizens and conclaim their information as proprietary. Adding this layer impedes access to information and open discussion. In my opinion, managed messaging is a very limited definition of what constitutes communication. Informed civic communication and engagement are predicated on clear policies, timely access to written and/or in-person communication and information, and the opportunity to exchange information, ideas, and opinions in a public setting. That said, I appreciate the city's concerns about improving citizen participation and your commitment to doing so. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, this is a bit of a hobby horse. You'll probably hear from me again.
That's all right. Thank you, thank you for your comments. We don't typically respond to public comment. It's an opportunity for the council to take in. That's how we've been working up till now. I know that the topic of minutes was brought up, was brought up, which is near and dear to your heart. It's something that we are also discussing in leadership, and, and is a, is a problem that we're tackling, the fact that our minutes are a couple of years behind, so I appreciate that being highlighted. And I'm going to continue moving through the public comment at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments that people have signed up for at this time?
None that we have.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the gallery that would like to provide public comment at this time? Is there anybody on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment at this time? Thank you. We'll now go to advice and information items. We'll start with our counselors, their committee and board assignments, and then move to department head reports. Counselor Menke, would you like to start us this evening?
Yes, I would. Counselors, I sent all of, or that is to say Claudia sent all of you an email about 6:00 this evening. Could you look on your emails and pull that up? And it has to do with the, any place, Any Door Place. Since the city, this is the first time I've had an opportunity to, I just received this today, and I just wanted to share this with the council because we've had been highly involved in this particular process, particularly with donations and other sort of things, and also going out and giving testimony to obtain this grant to, to work on this McMinnville Navigation Center, Any Door Place. So if most of you have pulled up, you can see the two buildings that are contemplated for this particular project. There's the old Craftsman and then another house over to the other side. And what the overall plan is, is to build a, a place in between. So these are the initial architectural renderings. It will probably change some, there may be some additions and deletions depending on the overall budget, you have to keep that in mind. The next page on that is the vision summary, and these are pictures that they wanted, they thought of as they were putting together the concept that they want people to see when they enter this place. Community is strength, warm tones, being able to see outdoors and to see the beautiful greenway that is behind the building. And then there's the interior inspiration imagery that, again, has wood tones and soft fabrics and a place that people know is open and a place they can come and get respite. The overall plan for this, okay, so the first, the next one is, we're going to look at this building and contemplate it, starting with the lower level. As we all know, this building is built on a very intense slope, so to speak. And it's going to be in three parts. Like I said, the initial part is the Craftsman, which is on the left. There'll be a, a middle part, and then there'll be another part over on the right side, which is the other building. So if you look at the lower level, this will be at a basement level, you can see in the Craftsman, this is going to be their primary shelter, and there should be about 32 beds within this shelter, an opportunity to sleep 32 people. And overall, it's open, you know, the opportunity to use it is 24/7. However, it will actually only be open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for entrance, so be aware of that. So on this level, you can see there's a male bunking area, so that would be eight people there, and then there's a shower toilet, there's an opportunity for laundry, but that is strictly to clean the bedding each night. And then there's, I guess there's actually two bathrooms there. They're not ADA accessible, though, that will be on the next floor. In the middle, you can see there's opportunities for three offices there, and there's a stairway because there is no stairway in the other building to, to get entrance from the upstairs and downstairs. In the other building, which would be open from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m., you can see there's storage, there's a restroom there, and a training meeting area. There'll be opportunities for people to use computers and things like that within that area, and possibly doing some testing at some point. Okay, the next picture is the first floor, and I apologize to those of you that are here, I just received this tonight, and this comes directly from YCAP. Okay, on the next one, you can see that we have, on the Craftsman side, the far left, you see the female bunk room. It's basically going to be the living and dining room as it was before, and there's going to be lockers out on the front porch that, for people to put stored things in, things they don't want to share with other people, whatever they might have that they want to keep safe, and so there's no access to it. You'll note in the female bunk room, there's at least, there's two sinks that will be there, so it will make access to them easier. There's a, a single-family bedroom in the back that'll house four people, and the ADA restroom, so that would be an opportunity, like that single-family room, if we had a male who needed wheelchair access or something like that, that would be how he would use, he would be on that floor instead of downstairs. You'll notice what was the old kitchen, there is going to be open to the center area, and in it will be a client laundry. And then, looking towards the middle area, the back will have a lot of windows across it, and there'll be windows in the front. The access to the overall building will be through the front door, which will be in the center area. There is an ADA bathroom in the middle, which is not going to happen because they want this area to be as open as possible. There's a small kitchenette where people can actually go and cook for themselves if there's produce or something, and in the back is a common area. This is an area where people can come, if we're having a hot day or a extreme cold day, people could come and be there and be safe. There's also two more ADA toilets on the far side there, and you'll notice, again, you'll see the staircase there on, next to the, the other building, because, again, there is no staircases. Going across into the other building, these are where the case managers will work, there's basically staff offices in here, and they, they've got a small kitchen lounge and a meeting area. And this will be where people come and meet to find, you know, like wellness checks or other important things that are happening to them. You know, like counseling for, counseling for weatherization and things like that. The set, the second floor, there's nothing, there will be no second floor in the middle section, but they will have three single-family bedrooms, again, that will be four-bedroom, four persons per bedroom, so altogether, you've got 32 beds as necessary. There's a shower toilet up there, and on the other side, there's a small area that is only accessible from the outside, and that, there's a toilet shower up there, the ceilings are quite low, though, so this is just basically an opportunity for staff to have some quiet time, maybe a break room or something like that. And then the other pictures show you kind of the colors and things they're looking at for the exterior. They're going to use board and batten on some parts of this, cedar siding, going to use concrete for a lot of the, you know, ground type cover, and then glass that probably is, I don't know, non-reflective or something. And then you can look at how the front entrance will look, at least as it currently is rendered. They'll be entering, and you can see the windows there, and the gray, it's going to be a dark gray building. On the next pictures, you see what is the palettes, they chose the green palette versus the blue palette, they wanted more of a warmer, comforter type of atmosphere. And then the last two pages, basically, you're looking, on the first one, the front office is, this is the entry place. It still looks closed off, but on the other side, it's far more open, and people can come in, and there's a lot of space there for people to come in and feel welcome. And this is where they access some of the different things. I, I guess that might be the kitchenette area, too. And I think that's it. I get back to the, it seems like there was one in the back, too. At any rate, I wanted you to see it, we've talked about it before, but not everybody's sure where it is or how it will look, and I, I felt like the council deserved to have a, a look at it and understand what's going to happen there. And it, the, the likely date for this is January or February 2024, to be, to be completed, yeah.
Thank you very much. Really happy to see progress being made on Any Door Place and the Navigation Center, and very hopeful for what that means for the city and the community. Counselor Payne? Counselor Payne.
The Landscape Review Committee met last Wednesday. I'm very appreciative and of them, and happy to report that they made a decision to choose some native plantings to go near, sorry, I'm really proud of them, to go near or in a parking lot that's proposed behind the cinema, whatever it's, coming attractions theaters. And so I'm just really grateful that we're going to have some native plants in a parking lot.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta.
I'm having a hard time with my mute button tonight. I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chenoweth.
The MEVLC met while I was in Israel. In that, we kind of went over where we're at with the different projects that we've been taking on. Workforce Development has been one of the priority projects that we have been focused on. Patty Herzog announced that both MEDP and UNIDOS have received grants to help further this project along. Jody Christensen came and did her first presentation to us since she was hired by the city. We are so thankful to have her, doing the program managing for our city. And she kind of laid out where the Nobel Grant is at this point, that was given to us by the Legislature for Business Assistance. Basically, we have it designating to five, four different areas, rather. Business Assistant Grants for Workforce Recruitment and Retention, Coordination of Sustainable Localized Workforce Programs, and a bilingual training mentorship program being put together by the Chamber. And then lastly, to develop a 40/60 loan forgiveness program with MISO. And if you're not familiar with what MISO does, it's a really cool program that helps businesses get off the ground. And so that's it for the MEVLC. The Parkway Committee also met. We heard from Anna Scharf, who expressed that coming into the next cycle, funds are going to be tight. It's going to be hard getting more money for the bypass for a little while. Not impossible, but it's going to be constrained. And that the 2A portion of it is moving right along. There was still some right-of-way to purchase, but because of the current economic climate, that right-of-way purchasing seems to be, those that own the land are more apt to sell. And I think that's it for my reports. If there's anything I missed on Parkway, Kelly can fill that in.
I think there were some interesting, my apologies. I think there were some interesting observations made by Anna during her, her topic. It's true, probably, it's going to be tight because it looks like the road between us and Washington is, the bridge is the most important priority. But she said the legislature, the mix will be different, and that it's going to take some time for people to become educated and understand the needs for the bypass. That was an interesting conversation. I, I don't think I have a great deal more to embellish what you've already said.
Thank you, Counselors. Counselor Gary.
Thank you. The DEIAC met, and we reviewed and spent some more time in the Parks and Rec and Open Spaces master plan, update on that group's role and where that's at, and some current process as to where that's at. We did some other housekeeping items as well, as went through the Equity Lens and Public Engagement Charter update, and had a good discussion around that. So kind of a preview of some pieces of what you guys heard during the work session. And then MURAC has not met, and just adding on to the School Board Joint City Council meeting we'll have in November, looking forward to that.
Thank you. Council President Garvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Fire District, we have a meet, we're on the agenda for the commission meeting Thursday, which is when they will kind of start the formal process of setting their public hearings in December and January, and just kind of working down that road to get this on the ballot. The mayor and I have Airport Commission meeting, or Airport Commissioner interviews Thursday and Friday this week in the afternoon, so we should have some qualified candidates coming before us for appointment to go live January 1. We have one commissioner that timed out in terms, so he won't be going for reappointment. And then Mark, who is currently, I think, vice chair? He was past chair of the Airport Commission. He applied for reappointment. And then we have a bunch of other well-qualified applicants, so look forward to reporting back on that. Nothing on YCOM and nothing on Visit McMinville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The McMinville Affordable Housing Commission meets tomorrow at 10:00 AM. We have a light agenda. It's available on Zoom. We'll be hearing updates from our community partners, including Encompass Yamhill Valley, YCAP, the Housing Authority of Yamhill County, Habitat for Humanity, potentially from County Health. And we have a work group that's continuing to meet to discuss how the construction excise tax will be administered once, once that comes into effect. And so they'll be updating the Affordable Housing Commission on their work since the last meeting as well, which was canceled. So I'm hoping it's a good body of work. And we'll now go to department heads. I'll start with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to continue on Zoom and ask our planning director, Heather Richards.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Two things I wanted to share with you to follow up on Counselor Mankey's report on the Navigation Center. That's been a great partnership with YCAP, and our work with FFA Architecture has been going really well. And I'm actually really excited for the project. I'd like the, the design of it to make it feel like it's residential and homey rather than institutional and sterile. So I'm happy to see that Kelly provided that those are schematic designs. I just want to make sure people realize that, and we're not in the constructibility, construction docs phase yet, so could be some changes as we go. With that said, we have an RFP out right now for a construction manager general contractor. Had a voluntary pre-bid meeting today, and had three, three agencies respond and participate in that, and all locals, so that was good to see, to try and find a good partner to help us move forward with that project. The other thing I wanted to share was, I sent pictures to city council, but just wanted to share it in this forum as well, because I don't think we talk about this side of our co-compliance program very often. But Nick Miles, our co-compliance officer, works with a lot of community groups around McMinville, putting together service projects. And he does one every year with Dunaway in terms of working with, they have, they have a service day for all their students. And he works with the teachers there to do graffiti, graffiti removal around town, and did so two weeks ago when the, when the weather was really good. And they had a great turnout, and the results were remarkable. And so he, he, he does a lot of that quietly and as a one-man team, and doesn't get a lot of kudos for that side of what he does, and I just wanted to say kudos to him because he worked so hard in that program.
Thank you very much. And to our HR Director, Vicki Hedges.
Thanks, Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. And to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. We'll now go to our consent agenda. Does any counselor wish to have any item pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, I will now consider a motion to approve the consent agenda as it appears in the packet.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Counselor Mankey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda has passed unanimously, and the city council meeting is adjourned at 7:32 PM.